Good evening. Tonight is January 8th, 2019. I am here by call of committee under Bedford School Committee Order with a roll call vote. Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Ms. Gueye?
Present.
Ms. Scoville?
Here.
And I am here. Ms. McAllister will be arriving later. Item number two, comments from the public. Is there public question to comment? Seeing done, item three, personnel report. Mr. Sills?
So we have two appointments, Special Education Teaching Assistant for leave of absence at BHS, Victoria Rowe, and a Special Education Teaching Assistant Behavioral Tech, Tatiana We have one out-of-state field trip that the Foreign Language Department at BHS would like to take. They presented a year or two ago on the WE Day, which is an AP Spanish conference that's held nationally, and it is highly educational, but it also focuses around creating service projects and using their Spanish in the process. This year, they want to expand it to French cinema classes as well, and it would be between February 8th and February 11th, that's a Friday night, through a Monday night. And 50 students, $300 per student, no cost to the school.
All right, Alex, a motion to approve this field trip, AP Spanish-French field trip to Montreal from February 8th to 11th, 2019, made no cost to the school.
So moved.
Ms. Gueye moves.
Second.
Scoville seconds. Are there any questions, Mr. McAllister?
No questions for me.
Ms. Gueye?
Just an observation, happy to see that it was expanded, since that was something we asked for last year, and would just make the suggestion that next year, we look at including kids who are not in AP. It may be nice to open it up to other students as well, but it is nice to see, given the fact it's in Montreal, and glad the French students were.
Yeah, so the French students are not AP. It's French cinema students, so I think they have taken that to heart.
Oh, good. Okay, I stand corrected.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No questions.
No questions. All those in favor of approving this field trip, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Great, thank you.
And before we have a donation, a gift?
Yes. So, Lanthius Medical Imaging would like to donate an Olympus BX-60 microscope to Bedford High School Science Department. It would be used in their Biology Department primarily, and would be an upgrade of imaging for students to observe. They're very excited about this. Typically, for gifts, we need to have a motion to approve and accept the gift, and then a sign off on this form.
Any questions about the microscope gift, Ms. McAllister?
Sounds like it's a pretty pricey microscope, valued at $4,000. So, it's an incredibly generous gift, nice to have, because that wasn't in our budget.
Excellent. Ms. Gueye?
Thank you.
The only question I have is, will there be maintenance costs? Well, is it like somebody offering us a used car? That was the only thing that I thought of. I don't know anything about maintenance.
Good question. Fortunately, there are not as many moving parts, but I don't know whether the lens needs to be ground or upgraded. I don't know that.
Okay. I think it's amazing, but that was my only...
Do we know why they came to do it to schools as a matter of fact? Did we ask them? Do you have a relationship with them, or?
I think they came forward. I don't have any other information.
Wonderful. Bill Brink a company. Alex, it's a motion to approve the gift of an Olympus BX-60 microscope to Bedford High School by any member of the committee. So moved. Ms. McAllister moves.
Second.
Ms. Scoville seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The attention to be accepted, the gift thanked Lanthius Medical Imaging, 400. Item number five, budget discussion. Superintendent Sills?
So, the updated version of the PowerPoint that was sent to you incorporates responses to your questions and suggestions that you made to improve the presentation. If you had a chance to review them, I don't feel the need to go through them on the screen, since we really want to get into discussion of the nitty-gritty, but I await your recommendation on that.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Good.
Thank you. It is a work in progress, both because we're going to be massaging the budget in this, in the next several meetings, but also because, you know, information, there are some issues around clarity around some past years of FTE that I'm still trying to nail down, so I'll be sharing that with you before we go to finance. David has also updated the budget book, and so you have at your disposal, you know, a line-by-line opportunity. Would you like to start right with the budget?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Yes, please.
David, are new items highlighted, or it's all?
No.
Okay.
All.
Okay. All right. So, I guess I need to be clear about whether you want to go line by line on the entire budget? All right.
Yep. I guess, rather than, I mean, going through each line is fine. I guess I would just say it'd be helpful if you sort of mentioned, this is a change, or this is a new thought we had, because some of this is just roll-ups from last year.
Right.
You know, just sort of year over year. So, you could just kind of, and then my request is just let us know what page you're on.
Yep.
Or all stay on the same page.
All right. So, let's jump right to BHS. Actually, I think we'll go in the order of the presentation and kind of use that to guide us through this.
Okay.
Would be the best thing. All right. So, let's start actually with Davis School. So, the first item that is a change in the line item budget is the addition of a second grade teacher at Davis School, and if, David, you can help me find these.
It would be under...
Construction.
Construction, elementary salaries, so change. Page four, line item 2340, 41, four, additional second grade teacher.
And that's in the FY20 expansion request column, correct, that amount?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
And that's just an enrollment-driven change, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. I got it. Why don't we do this, if there's any questions on that page, maybe, are you okay with us firing questions?
Sure.
Dan, tell us how you want to do it.
We need school.
Oh, that's fine.
Sir?
So, last time, you went page by page. Yeah, it might just be easier to go page by page.
Yes.
But it's your call.
So, we can run through the lines quickly on each page, and then accentuate the additions, but if there's things that we flagged on each line M on that page, let's go ahead and ask about it. So, let's look at Davis, page one, if that's all right?
That sounds fine.
Great.
That's what I thought when I prepared the other.
Sure. Great. Are we on page one?
Page one, Davis.
Page one, Davis. All right. So, the, why don't we just kind of name the places where there are FY20 changes?
Yep.
Right. So, there is a change in the salary for principals and assistant principals, and that's as it relates to...
That's the assistant principal is, in the teacher's contract, and their step, lane, or, in this case here, I think she's at the top, so her COLA, but her summer days are impacted by that because of the pay increase. It's a minor.
Second item, team leaders, again, steps, COLA, and lane increases, 4,396. Administrative support staff in the office, 3,104, again, steps, lanes, et cetera. So, these are actually paralleled in the maintenance of effort budget, because that's where that is first registered as a change.
It's worth noting, these are the result of collective bargaining.
Correct.
And these are decisions, this is where it shows up, that these decisions were made not as you were building this budget, but in the collective bargaining.
Right. This was already, these are...
Agreed.
Systems in place.
All right. Nothing else on that page.
Any questions about page one?
David, you want to try to break down what's happening on this page?
Well, the only thing that's really changing here, again, you've got things that are driven by collective bargaining, custodian, everything else is pretty much the same. The large total is just all the roll-up for admin, that's at $10,000. That's all the individual pieces we saw before. The custodians are, that's driven again by their collective bargaining agreement that we just recently ratified. Page three.
Just one second. Actually, who pays us $5,000 for rental of Davis? Is it basketball and sports, or the people in rec department?
Yeah, the $5,000 comes out of the building rental account, so that would probably be rec in the gym, or whatever other organizations we currently get on.
Okay.
Dave, could you just explain offsets for those people at home who don't love looking over budgets?
Basically, in the last, well, since I've been here, we've always had accounts where we generate revenue, and we apply that revenue directly to the budget, generally in areas where it directly connects. Building rental, we use that for building services, either custodial supplies, custodial salaries, maintenance supplies, maintenance salary, wherever we can fit that in. We try to keep it as consistent as possible. Over the years, we've grown to have offsets of approximately $2.5 million, which means that our budget is actually $2.5 million larger, because it's being funded by an alternate source. So, but we try to apply them, A, in the areas that they really belong to, hence, circuit breaker goes against special ed expenses only, building rental goes against things like custodians and things that are directly related to running the building, and then we have other payroll and things like the Hanscom money, Metco money, things like that, that can apply to line items that are appropriate for its use.
So, is it accurate to say the offsets would be anything other than state and local revenue, or state and local money that's directed specifically for...
Yes, we have local funds that we raise, revenue that we raise from any kind of our activities. We have state money that comes in grants and different formats. We also have federal money, which comes from the IDA grant, the special ed grant, and some other things that are passed through grants from the Department of Education.
So, this is one of the things that, when people look at budgets, school budgets, it can be a little bit suspicious at times, right, that there's pockets of money offsetting. One of the things that I appreciate that what we do is we put the money, the offset is set exactly where it is. So, if it's money coming in from the football gate revenues, we wouldn't apply that to a Spanish teacher at the middle school. We would apply that proximal to where the money is spent, on the athletic program or on the facility at Bedford High.
So, gate fees for the high school football game go against coaches' salaries.
So, I think that that's, it's worth pointing out, that's not common for all schools. I think, I like the way we do it, that it makes sense, it's proximal, it's logical.
They bucket it as a general piece. Certain revenues have certain stipulations that are tied to them, hence, circuit breaker, we can only use them for special ed expenses, and on top of that, I can't use it to cover, directly cover special ed transportation expenses. That's one of the things they prohibit. Why is...
Although there are groups that are continuing to try to push to include that.
Yes, they're trying to get that both into the calculation, so you get credit for the expense of sending a student out of district, but also now you can apply it to that particular expense.
It's the reason I pointed out, is because it's easy to follow the money, right across the budget line.
Yes.
So, thank you for doing it that way, both of you.
Any questions about page two?
Nope.
All right. Page three is, again, just some roll-ups. There is a $500 on page three in the Art Department, a request for an additional increase to pay for the supplies they use. A lot of this is driven by the number of kids, but also some inflationary factors. Things are just getting more expensive with the program.
So, as we look through the budget, it's important to know that sometimes we see a number like 19%, and we gasp, and then we look across, and it's actually, counts for $500.
Right. Well, that's the trouble.
Worth looking for, all of us, at both of those.
Yeah. A 2% increase can be several thousands of dollars, and a smaller is 20%. So, that's what that's driven by. Computer education is simply a COLA adjustment for a staff member that decided, there are 50% lane, 50% Davis. Okay. In computer education, the initial increases here and some decreases are related to, the first one is for a replacement lease on existing, replacing existing iPads. In the first year of the lease, you end up paying slightly more, because you're getting new items, so you're paying for new cases, or some things that are one-time costs. So, that's replacing a lease that is in its third year, and we're only simply paying for the acquisition cost, which is about 50% of the total cost of the acquisition right here, because you're not paying for, now we're paying, now we're back to paying for applications, cases, keyboards, if they exist, and it's just, that's the nature of the initial year of the lease. Next year, that lease will go down, you know, approximately, you know, $3,000 to $4,000 probably.
Just to clarify, David, you're on page four, correct?
I am on page four, line item 2345, 11, four.
Thank you.
And was there, I believe in our last meeting, perhaps Mike brought, someone brought up about DESI and iPads with MCAS. Has there been any clarification?
No, I looked, I didn't see anything yet.
Okay.
But I'm keeping my eye.
Thank you.
The second one, there's a slight reduction. We are, this is being driven by the fact that we are, we're using a different style of sync cart, less expensive. So, that's reflective of that. And then, as you see in the next one, the year two of a lease for 30 units, the $1,500 is a reduction in the cost of one-time costs that were last in the prior year, probably cases, or something along those lines. And then, there's the final year of a lease for all those, for the items that we purchased or acquired three years ago. So, there's no change there. So, there's an actual reduction overall in the total cost of equipment that we're either maintaining numbers at, at Davis School.
And I'm sorry, can you remind me, the lease expanded, do we get to keep them at the end of the lease?
No, we send them back at the end, and then we end up having to, depending on the condition that they go back in, usually, lane and Davis in the middle school, because they're not taken home, there's a lot less wear and tear in them. They tend to be okay. When the lease is let to us, the understanding is that there is going to be natural, normal wear and tear. If it doesn't live up to that, if there's a broken cord, or if there's a busted frame, or any kind of thing that makes it something where they have to go to repair to make it resalable, then they charge us back.
Okay.
So, sometimes we end up paying a few hundred bucks for batches that go back, because we're, you know, there's five or six that are basically, we probably never...
And sometimes we have bought them back, though, correct? We have that option?
Two and a half, I think, three years ago, we bought approximately 100 of the units from them, and put them into...
The middle school.
Into the, I think they were spread out. In some cases, those are being replaced in addition to running a new lease, so, because they are now, they're four-year limit. So, they're kind of, they're retired.
Okay, retired. Thank you.
Okay. So, at the bottom there, then you have the, the maintenance of effort, the salary line item for the elementary school teachers at $29,000. That's, again, simply the COLAs and any steps that may exist in there, any changes in the existing payroll. In addition to that, you have the one new additional teacher at $64,000. That's the, that's our placeholder, M4, salary placeholder that we use in trade. So, the total is $93,000, or roughly 6%.
And that's the second grade teacher.
That's the second grade teacher.
Yes. Requesting the addition of a kindergarten teacher, we're going to repurpose the interventionist instead.
I have a question about the, when we negotiated the contract with the association, we project, you know, COLA plus steps equals a chemo percentage over year-to-year, and I assume with retirement, it always comes up a little bit lower than projected? So, we, you know, we think it's going to be around, you know, 10.8% over, assuming year-over-year, it might be a little less, because it's...
Right, because you do have some shifting in there. You do have people who leave.
Yeah, yeah. So, did you ever pull the numbers up, like what it actually ends up being, year-over-year for that?
I really haven't calculated the churn, only because we've had years where we've had a fair amount of it, because we had a lot of, a fair amount of retirees.
Yeah.
And we've been able to bring the replacements in at lower than that cost. Other years, we've had smaller units, we've had more people leave, but then they've been in specialty places, high-end, in languages or sciences or special ed, where you end up generally, and you're better off hiring at a higher step.
Higher level, sure.
Just for the general experience.
John, do you want to just comment on that a little bit? Like, with every opening, why wouldn't we hire a bachelor's plus one? Because I think that sometimes people say, well, there's a retiree, here's this great opportunity to save money, but that doesn't always equal, and why is that?
Well, first of all, we often do save money, because a retiree is a step 12, plus, you know, longevity, and if we aim for a step four, then we're going to make significant savings. But, you know, our, you know, our parents have come to expect a certain level of, you know, of teaching skill, and somebody who's been seasoned at least for, you know, three or four years, there's a huge difference. Now, there are exceptions to that. We sometimes come across just an amazingly talented first-year teacher, and if that happens, we're going to hire them, right? That they're very, you know, that they're quick learners, and we have a very deliberate process of induction and of supporting all teachers. And then, as David said, there are certain, certain personnel whom it's just very difficult to find, both because of how competitive is out there, math and science, for example, and then particularly psychologists, people like that. And there, there's a particular value in having somebody who's seasoned, because there's a lot of legalities involved with the writing of evaluations and things like that, and if it's not done well, you know, there's exposure for our whole district and the town. So, there are a number of factors that go into it.
Thank you. We skipped five?
Five.
Yeah.
Five. Reduction, and a major reduction for a, excuse me, for the replacement of our gifted and talented staff member who is retiring. Approximately half of that, half the time there are Davis, half the time are Lane. Again, the backfill is based on an M4 position, and that's half the salary rate.
So, just to be, to add a little more to that. So, presently, our gifted and talented teacher at Lane and Davis is also our math curriculum coordinator, K through five. And she does that simply on the basis of a stipend. We are just unable to get the kind of coaching and the coordination of the math programs that we need without having a real math curriculum coordinator. When this person retires, and we're able to reduce the amount of gifted courses that we're offering at the elementary, because we've incorporated more project-based learning for all kids, and we really only need to address the needs of a very relatively small number of kids who just, whose math ability particularly is just uniquely strong, and we need to be able to continue to challenge that group of kids. But we no longer need a broad gifted and talented program, because we really want all kids to be doing that deep, rich, project-based learning. So, we can do that with a point, by adding a point two, we free up that 1.0 to be a full-time math curriculum coordinator.
Just briefly, and I know we're enmeshed in budget, but I just chart a memory. I was listening to something this weekend about Massachusetts school districts struggling to meet the needs of math classes, because in some districts, 50 to 75% of the students participate in after-school math programs, whether it's Thai math, Russian math, or whatever, and that it's really impacting the districts, because the students are coming into class already knowing the material. And there are other students that aren't in these programs, and that some, I don't know if that's been a challenge in Bedford, but I know in Newton and Brookline and some of the other districts, they're really struggling. I don't know if Mike sees it in Belmont, but it's really changing how this idea of not necessarily gifted, it's just that they're all taking extra math, five days a week.
Pity.
It'd be interesting to look at that later, when we have our budget, but I just wanted to raise.
No, it is something that we've been impacted by, no question. And, you know, keeping in mind that there have always been differentials, you know, for kids, kids whose parents know math versus kids whose parents don't know math, they do get a leg up, there's no question. But there's a whole industry now, right, that's built around that.
You know, there's actually a new school on Hartwell Ave, and I was by there Sunday night, and there was a parking lot full of people coming and going.
It's interesting to see whether challenge success...
Stem the tide.
Addresses, you know, what the motivation is behind that.
Indeed.
So, that's the, that's a point two gifted. David?
Okay, the next change you see is a, in the guidance office. The first number is the base salary, that's going up to $4,380, steps and COLA. The second big item is the addition of a 1.0 FTE guidance counselor, 64094, that's an M4, so the total is $68,000, or roughly 45% increase, again, driven by the addition of the body for the guidance counselor.
And that, just to remind you, is based on our growing social-emotional needs, illustrated here by the number of students who are hospitalized, both for physical and emotional reasons, and then by the incredible changes that we're seeing even at the K through two level, where our one guidance counselor is responsible for all 600 students, but has a specific caseload with kids who are, whose families are involved with drugs and alcohol, kids who witnessed... who witnessed violence in the home, death of a parent, divorce groups, high frustration socially or academically, high anxiety, gender issues. And she's dealing with that through a number of, you know, individual counseling, small group counseling, lunch groups, check-ins. But it's, it's just, it's, this is changing all over. And the number of kids who are impacted by trauma and whose learning is impacted by that is really growing exponentially. So we really need to add to our, our guidance staff. We want to do that with an adjustment counselor.
Okay, next, uh, next two line items are the base cost for supplies and for textbooks in, at Davis School. There's an increase of four thousand dollars in the consumable supplies because we're bringing new classrooms online with the project. And then same thing with an additional amount of money for textbooks, again, for increases in, for those classrooms that are coming online.
So a new kindergarten classroom, new second-grade classroom, that's going to be approximately forty, forty-four kids. We need materials for, for all those kids.
That closes up page five.
Page five.
Yep. And everyone to six.
We need lazy Susans.
Page six is, is pretty standard boilerplate stuff. You've got salary line items that are changing simply out of COLA and step increases to the existing staff that are in there.
And you'll note that the original consideration of a kindergarten teacher is noted here as, as not moving forward.
That closes out six?
Yep.
Yeah.
Page seven, we have the addition midway down the page of contracted services for a math interventionist at Davis School to address some issues that they have identified.
Yes, and following, following the ten-thousand-foot view presentation to finance committee, finance committee raised a number of questions that are answered explicitly in the presentation. But one of them was whether any positions could be filled through contract services rather than through direct operating budget and line items. And the reality is you can't do that with classroom teachers and other kind of standard employees. You know, we have a union contract and that's simply not allowed. But there are some positions, at least, that can in the short run be filled through contract services. We already do so with a math interventionist at Lane, and we'd like to do the same with a math interventionist at Davis.
What's the, um, time commitment or expectation for that position? Do they end every day for a couple hours? They come in as requested?
That's really for the school to work out with them what's best in terms of the schedule. I believe that we've done it different ways, either several hours, five mornings a week, or, you know, double that time two days a week, essentially. So it depends on, on how the class needs are.
And so that number is very precise, it's based on the line number?
It's based on a point five, yeah.
Is that a point four?
Yeah, no, that's point, that looks like a point four, you're right.
Okay, okay.
Any more questions on page seven?
Nope. Page eight, most of these items are relatively static. There's fifteen hundred dollars additional to the science kits at Davis School. Again, we're bringing two new classrooms online, we want to get a full complement of consumables for those students in use of those classrooms. Any other questions on page eight?
Nope.
Okay, page nine, again, um, the changes that are existing here are steps and lanes for the Sped Teaching Assistance. And the major offset there is the Sped IDA grant. Generally, a portion out, about three hundred thousand dollars a year, that goes towards salaries for the parent professionals. It allows us to maintain staffing for that. And it's a good use of the money because we don't, nothing gets applied to MTRS for it, which makes the dollars actually go farther. And then down at the bottom, we do have, again, within the textbook line item, forty-three hundred and fifty dollars, again, the startup cost for foundations, Fontis and Pinnell and other assessments for the two new classrooms.
Can we talk about subs for a second? And, yeah, I'm, I'm the person, there's an ongoing challenge with filling subs. Are we spending all that money? We raise the rates to try to address the missing spaces? Is that the right amount? Is it too, too big if we're not hiring enough?
We're still struggling with subs where our, our average non-fill rate is between forty-four and fifty-five percent a day, you know, a month.
It varies by school, I assume?
It varies by school. That's actually a middle school number, but, you know, what we end up having to do is pull teaching assistants in those cases, who should be supporting students in the classroom. We end up with, at the high school, teachers who have a free block having to teach another period. So in this proposal is actually to change from one full-time substitute, five-day substitute per school to two. Now, that'll come out of the same general sub fund. We're not adding a request for additional funds for that, but we think it's more efficient, more effective, and then with the leftover money. So as you remember, as you just mentioned, we raised the sub rate from seventy-five dollars a day to eighty-five dollars a day this year, but we're still seeing some places like Concord and Lexington, I think they're now up to probably a hundred or, and so it's tough, you know.
I'd be curious to know whether our, like what our staff absence rate is, whether that's going up or down over the years. I always think about that would be connected pretty closely to contractual negotiations, you know, with staff absences. Because one of the challenges, you know, I, I was at one school and they said, we've got a real substitute problem. And I looked at the data and I said, it sounds like you got an attendance problem. And so I'd just be, I would just, I don't need those numbers and I don't need them publicly, but I hope that we're checking that as well.
We are, but one of the things that's caused a significant increase in the number of days, of number of teachers and days out, is that we have added a, a significant number of, of teacher pull-out days, particularly for our team teaching training. So we agreed contractually, and it was actually, we made the offer and the union was also interested because we want our teams to do well, that each team would be, have three days for co-planning, in addition to their co-planning time if they have. But it's, it's a huge, it's a huge amount of planning. So that and some other pull-out days for some departments. So we're actually going to review that. We can't review the contractual piece, but there's other pull-out days that we've used for curriculum development and things like that during the year. And so that's, that's part of what the uptick has been.
Can we find out if Concord is able to attract subs? I mean, the difference of fifteen dollars, we may need to revisit it, but I, I would imagine they're having difficulty as well, because it seems to be across the state that we're having trouble.
I give me.
And then I guess my second question, and we may not know the answer to this, but with the new paid family leave, is that going to impact teachers? How does that work?
I'd have to see what the, the final impact is. There are a lot of things that, depending on the law, that it stipulates, you know, we have, we've, people that take family leave now and it's, you know, it's not.
It's just that now there's different payroll taxes, all these other things.
Right, there's just a different way of doing math.
Okay.
So one question, we use AESOP, correct?
Yeah. So this, go ahead.
I would just say it's, it's, there's a massive amount of data with that program, but one of the data points that they can give you if you request from AESOP, they can give you fill rates across the, across the state. So they'll tell you the average middle school, the average high school. Now, they own all that data and they can give that to you, but I know that's, that exists, because I've seen some of it from AESOP.
So we can look at that.
That's worth a second.
This is, so this, this proposal to go with four more in-house subs is our third effort. First was AESOP by digitizing and making it possible to get the information out to potential subs more quickly, raising the sub rate, and then this. The fourth one is in the wings with the, the building project at the high school, because what Heather hopes to do with one of those rooms is have a space where any student whose class isn't covered will come there. And because they all have their iPads, they will be able to do work that's been given.
It's almost like a giant study hall.
It's like a giant study hall. And that should, you know, that should free up a lot of subs that are pulled into the high school for the other buildings, but that's a few years off.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I'm just curious, now, if we raised the per diem, yet the fill rate went down, are we just throwing money at a problem which is going to be really challenging to solve?
Well, we have to pay minimum wage, so.
Right, which is a good question, right? I mean.
There's actually, there's a conversation about that, about not having, that municipalities are exempt from paying minimum wage.
What a great country.
And only because of the way that the law is written.
Conversation for another time.
And how municipalities are treated differently now.
They exempt to be.
I'm not sure if that's, that goes for substitutes, but since they are sort of in that category.
So I think we actually probably do pay about minimum wage, eighty-five. If it, if it goes to fifteen dollars an hour minimum wage, then we'll have to bump it up, well, we don't have to, but we could bump it up to ninety. What we can do is see whether we can see in the data from year, over year, whether there's been any increase in our fill after we raise the rate. And we'll look at the statewide information as well.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, are we on page ten yet? Sorry.
We are.
Go ahead of yourself.
Let me know when you're on page ten, any, any second.
I do want to note that we are, we're adding twenty-two hundred dollars at Davis from the building rental fund to try to keep pace with at least some of the offsets.
All right.
As part of our, our program to constantly look at that and use some of that money as we go along, that's in a prudent way. Page ten.
Page ten, Mike, here we go. So I'm confused, could you clarify for me that the Davis School modular removed from building project?
Yes. We are, we currently pay for the modulators on a monthly basis. In FY nineteen, we determined that, given the current conditions and just making sure that we have enough swing space and things like that, if we need them to keep that in. They will essentially be going away. So this could potentially, if, if the project hits its, all of its marks and there's no need for reusing them, that is a, a conversation we're having within the building committee, to keep the modulators in place, then we've at least covered six months of, of an ongoing lease. If we needed more of it, we have to find that money. But if things are, things go off at the project, we may be able to get rid of that as of July first and free up eight thousand dollars.
And that's why it's a fifty percent reduction and not a hundred percent reduction?
Right.
Because we're using it as potential swing space and we'll make that decision.
Potentially may have it just for storing things.
Yeah.
It may, they may go away completely. It just depends on.
But it's a careful approach.
And that was also the issue Joe M brought up.
Yes.
It's a careful approach and it may actually end up netting us eighty-one hundred more dollars if we decide.
Right, right.
Okay.
If we do keep it, which is being proposed by one of the members of the building committee, I think we would look to then purchase them, you know, because it doesn't, you know, if we decide to keep them, we'd be keeping them long time, long-term, as some kind of a storage space. They can't be used as classroom space anymore. They're, they'll be out of code at that point.
Will they be used as a town museum?
They will be museum pieces themselves.
Trying to problem solve.
So I, I don't see them, I don't see if we keep them, them impacting the operating budget.
Well, the only thing that you'd have to, to heat electricity for them, again, small space.
Flipping, they'd be school and downtown.
Maybe for the museum.
Dog park.
Yep.
Depending on what you use them for, you'd have to call them in some fashion.
That's helpful clarification.
So that discussion will come to this committee.
We need it.
Because we, you know, we are, we own the lease at this point.
That's a helpful clarification, thank you.
Thank you, I had that question too.
Yep, that does, so that does page ten.
And the rest of the, the page is, is pretty, is static. Any other questions on page ten? Page eleven, finally, the, this will be the, FY twenty will be the first year of a new bus contract. We've averaged in the three and a half to four percent or so over the last five years of a contract. I put the contract out to bid on Monday. I've had two responses or two requests. A third one that I'm not sure what a company in Seattle is going to do for us, but they want the bid.
This will be at Bedford, Washington?
Yeah, right.
That'd be good for me with my new grandkids.
It's a shovel bus. I'm, I'm putting five percent as a placeholder. The hard part that, that I've seen over the past few years is the, the cost for drivers is going up. It's been difficult to keep drivers in, in a lot of communities because it's a mobile workforce and the market is, is very good. It's been very, very tight. I know the current carrier, the vendor we have, the owner has been driving a lot, the general manager's been driving a lot, people who are not normally assigned to buses, they've been filling in because it's the nature of their business. Thankfully, they know how to drive, so that removes a burden from this.
This does not include additional route?
This does not include changes to the route at all. My concern at this point is the bus count we had this past, last month was about seventeen hundred and fifty kids. We've got some buses that have thirty-five, we have some buses that have sixty. We, it's just the way where kids live, they're not smoothing out, they're just, you know, they're.
That's actual riders or kids who should be riding?
No.
Those are actual riders, that's, those are bus counts. I mean, in some of these cases, with the older kids for the high school, we might have seventy-five or eighty kids in a route, but just by the nature of the fact that the high school kids don't, don't ride in general, you know, we end up with fifty-five kids.
Except for the Gallus or children.
We ride the bus.
And they ride the bus.
So.
Two questions. One is the, the bidding process.
Yes.
Does that fairly competitive bidding process every year? And it, and has Bedford Charter ever not been the bidder for us?
Bedford Charter has been our bus company for forty-plus years. Since I've been here, I've only had one other company even sniff at sending in a bid, and they sent a nice package, binder, lots of pretty pictures. And the first sentence was, we've decided not to submit a bid at this time. It's, it's the nature of bus transportation in the state.
And the proximity.
It's difficult, it's difficult to have, to transport seventeen hundred kids around in a, in a small space and get them on, to, to school on time and home in a reasonable hour. And that's for the company that's actually here. You know, part of our stipulation is they need to have a garaging station within thirty minutes of downtown Bedford at rush hour in the morning, which eliminates a lot of, you know, a lot of companies there, for a student or, you know, the closest would be C and W over in Lexington. But they have Lexington, they have that bus service, and that's, there's a tremendous.
Thirty minutes down Gray Road, that might be.
Yeah.
Reckless.
It's, so it's just, it's, it's a, it's a complicated process. You know, we can hope that we don't, you know, it's just the, the function of it. My concern at this point is more kids, you know, are we going to end up going from sixteen bus routes now to seventeen and eighteen in the near future, which is an expensive proposition.
Do we keep data on regular use of the buses? I mean, do we have some, because so many kids don't take it, I mean, do we?
Well, we do bus counts twice a year. That's part of the, the condition of the, of the contract.
Okay.
You know, ten years ago, we, we had fourteen hundred kids on the buses. Now we have seventeen hundred. And when you look at the, the percentages. And when you look at the percentages, you know, we don't transport a lot of kids, there's, you know, buses, Lane and Davis are not ninety-five percent full in terms of the totals that could be there. A lot of parents drop off. The middle school is very busy during the morning, a lot of parents drop off kids in the morning, same thing in the afternoon. So it's, I think it's the nature of the community, it's what we do, but I think there's going to come a time when that percentage is just that, you know, you know, twenty-five percent are still going to drop off their kids, but that seventy-five is going to be a bigger number and we're going to need more buses.
What about on, like, on Wednesdays for the Davis and Lane kids? I think there's an enormous, and they have two buses going to Kids Club.
Yes.
But then, then the buses going to homes are probably pretty empty. Is there any, I mean, that's a logistical nightmare, but like, only on Wednesday afternoon, reducing the buses down would be crazy, but it feels like there's so many going out there that are underused.
It's a timing issue too, because each of the bus routes is approximately twenty-four miles long from beginning to end, you know, in, I mean, for, for all four schools. So they have a lot of places.
For all four schools, not each one.
Not each school, right. But you have buses that go out to Middlesex Turnpike for a middle school and a high school, but then they come back and then they do a lane route that's closer to, you know, Carlisle Road or something like that. And then they go over and they do a route down Great Road at Davis School. So they try to cycle them in. If you reduced it, you'd have to have such an accurate account of which kids are going to go on that bus. And kids who go on the Kids Club bus, you know, pairs my call up in the morning and say, I need to take my kid to Kids Club, or I'm not sending him to Kids Club.
Or you can't.
Then absenteeism, you just, it would be, you'd end up shooting yourself in the foot.
Yeah.
I think Austin brought in MIT to look at their buses, even MIT threw up their hands and said, there's just too many contingencies.
There's too many variables that you have absolutely no control over, and then you've got to worry about traffic.
In Bedford?
In Bedford, yeah, traffic, yeah, traffic could be a four-letter word in Bedford.
How, how often do you tweak the bus stops? Because I, I, and the bus routes, because I know consistently, so at this point, I've had a kid on the middle school, high school bus for seven years, and every year I hear that our bus, that, that the bus that serves our neighborhood is packed, particularly on the way home.
I mean, every year, we establish the list of students that, that they have to consider. And she goes through the bus list and finds the kids that should be walking or within wire distance, or the kids that have to be picked up because even though they're a short distance away, conditions don't allow them to cross Great Road and whatever. So that's done every year. They try not to move stops, they, because you can't, once you start doing that, you, then you're disrupting every year, you've got to do something every year. But changing routes, adding students from one area to another, it's not a smooth transition because kids live in neighborhoods and the neighborhoods have not drastically changed, it's just that within the neighborhood, it ebbs and flows. You get, you know, up at the end of one street, suddenly those kids all move, move on through high school, and in the intervening years, the new families have moved on to the lower end, and then it goes that. So I would, I would be willing to say that if we looked at the breakout of kids ten years ago to now, they probably live in the same areas, they're just in different places in terms of, in that small area. So, you know, and sometimes you can't just add this neighborhood on to this bus because the logistics of getting there are impossible, or.
I might just have a comment too, and I, I see this living on Davis, we just have so many stops, and I know we're doing the budget, maybe we can look at this another time, but maybe a bus study, get input from parents down the road, pardon the pun, but just to get it better, like, even on Davis Road, there's so many stops, I mean, God bless those drivers, but because we don't have sidewalks, there aren't places to leave kids. And so it just becomes, it's just, it's like a journey every time you go down Davis Road with a school bus.
Which leads.
And they're really good.
Right.
But it takes long.
The Concord Road is the same way. You know, and there are places where you think you should be able to kind of overcome that, but.
But maybe a study down the road at some point that gets some data from parents.
Particularly because, you know, Ben has asked for, what's the trigger point for each school that might require more building at some point? Well, I think we could also look at what are the trigger points on the buses?
I think you do.
Because if there, if there's a bus that's packed now and you get five more kids, and it's not feasible to pick them up in another route without drastically already pushing our timeframes, which are really up against it already.
Tight, yeah.
Davis kids are, you know, getting home an hour and fifteen minutes later, you know, even within Bedford sometimes.
I've got to assume the parents that live the furthest away from the school are more likely to use the bus, and the folks that live closer tend to just say, I'll drop them off. But it may change for work.
It depends, right, it depends on how their travel is. You remember Bedford's built like a starfish. There's no circular route around. When you think about, you go up Old Mill Rucker, you go out Great Road, you have South Road, so it's sort of, it's a star, it fans out, and there's no connection between South Road and North Road, and there's no connection between North Road and Great Road.
It's like a transit.
That, you could send the bus around.
Loop it, maybe.
It's just, it's a, yeah.
Okay. It's a further discussion, but it might be worth considering a bus study down the road.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are we ready to go into the next, so that's.
Samantha, sorry.
That concludes your Davis.
Any questions about Davis School and the budget? Anything you've heard? You take the bus?
Um, no.
Did you used to?
She's a typical Bedford.
You, you, would you go to bus to your grandparents' house too? And, and to home, so you're on different routes, that must have.
Yeah, I'm more likely, I guess, now, if I have to go with my grandparents, I'll take the bus to my grandparents'.
Special ed?
Special ed or?
Yeah, we might as well go in order at this point and come back to administration.
All right.
Special education, page one.
Okay, some of these, many of these accounts are duplicated within the school that they're in, so you'll see them more than once.
Page one is, is all COLA FTE, with the exception of staff travel, is that right? And some supplies, but it's all maintenance and effort, nothing, nothing fanciful.
Page two, again, there's fairly standard changes for staffing, COLA, and STEPS. You have offset accounts for circuit breaker as well as the IDA grant, no expansion in that particular line item, or that, that area. Page three, which the major change that we have is in teaching assistance at Lane School, we're adding one sped TA at the program. All of the other changes are driven by STEPS and Lanes and COLA. The twenty-five eight is the initial step for a teaching assistant. And then the remainder of the page is again COLA and step increases for staffing, no changes in materials. Any questions on page three and special ed? Okay. Page four, again, driven specifically by COLA and step increases for existing staff, no additions, no changes to, to any of the other parts of the request. Page five, again, no changes relative to any of the moving parts outside of STEPS, Lanes, and current, there was a request which was removed for some additional system-wide special ed folks, occupational therapists, BCBA, that was removed in the initial budget presentation.
I'm sorry, David, this is the, is this the point eight PT and point six OT?
Yeah, there's an OT in that grouping.
So we'll have to double check this, but my understanding is that we were keeping that in, but it's, it's being paid by, by the special ed grant. So it won't impact our budget, but it could impact the town's budget for benefits.
Okay.
This is page five.
It may have been, we can come back to that.
Yeah.
John, page five in the twenty-two hundred and ten, fifty-nine nine.
Because some of those are contract services, right, and we don't?
Right.
Well, we've been paying for it out of the special ed grant, right?
Okay.
And so they haven't been within, we haven't considered them part of our operating budget, we don't count them as FTE. And the consequence of that has been that we haven't been able to hold on to people more than one year, which is not good for kids. So this would bring them into the budget, get them benefits if they need them, but it would continue to be paid by special ed grant.
And when you say grant, is that an IDA? Is that, okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, so there's no expectation that that will go away.
Let's hope, let's, yes.
If, let's put it this way, if that went away, it would change the entire landscape.
No, no, I don't mean to be, again, budget.
But I, I say that because you don't want to pay for, you know, permanent employees with grant money that could go away, right? Because then you own them and then you have to find the money or you have to fire them. So this is, this is different.
Program gets, gets gone. Okay, page seven?
Six.
Six, I'm sorry. No significant changes in six outside of STEPS, Lanes, and cost of living. In district transportation, going up by five percent. Again, part of the bus contract is for them to provide services. I got a placeholder. Page seven, this is the added district transportation, we've calculated based upon what we, we know right now, I plugged a three percent increase in for, primarily for case transportation. Anything that happens with case is usually a year behind because of the assessment that they use for, for students. Also, you never know where the students are going to end up necessarily, and their formula is rather convoluted, so there's not a one-to-one relationship between if we lose a kid who goes to one location, that it's X dollars, it's all recalculated for distance, number of students going from one system to one school, and you get discounts for multiple students going. Lab should go down, but it's entirely dependent upon the number of kids that we transport with lab and what their final costs are, so it may be something that fewer kids may not lead to, oh, again, a one-to-one relationship of reduction, but there's a twenty thousand dollar increase placeholder for those services. Then you have, the next one is the sped tuition for the case collaborative. We just recently, in the last couple of years, have gone to a, away from the assessment and to a per student tuition piece. Right now, I have six students, next year I have one age out, so we will be down one student. And again, this is a guess on the tuition increase based upon our experience with them. I usually plug in five percent for case, last year I think we're at four, eight, five. And then there's a circuit breaker piece. That'll be returning to the existing, or the traditional sixty-two thousand dollars we increased this year to cover the cost of some new students that came to us. That will probably deplete any sort of cushion I have there, although we should be in reasonable shape with the circuit breaker. Any other questions on that page?
Just a question on the tuition there and with the age out. So the FY nineteen is based on someone already aging out, and twenty is the increase, the natural increase?
No, nineteen is based on the total six students.
So next year there's five, but it's still more expensive?
Yes, well, you've got, I'd have to double check, one of those kids may be leaving halfway through the year.
Okay.
They leave their birth.
All right.
When a student reaches twenty-two, they are shown.
Gotcha, all right.
Exits. Okay, page eight, this is our major added district line item and the lab line item. The first one is lab. Again, right now I have twenty-one students, next year I will have seventeen. Some of those kids will be aging out, we have a couple of kids who will be graduating, that we know they've completed their stuff, they will be moving out. We also have the application of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in lab credits that is being applied to that thing. And then the rest of this is a three percent, primarily three percent tuition increase for the remaining kids, plus their, some ancillary services for one-to-one aides, bus monitors and services.
John, could you talk a little bit about what lab credits are and how they're determined?
Sure. So first of all, let me just point out that one of your questions was what are, what have been the comings and goings that are impacting the budget? And so this is the detail that David's providing relative to those questions. So Bedford, as you know, belongs to three special ed collaboratives, case, lab, and Edco. Lab is, I believe, the second largest special ed collaborative in the state. It has a very robust programming, very successful programming, very effective programming. And there are only five districts in it, Bedford being one of them. So it does, it charges, it charges a differential for districts that are not members of lab. And, and a large share of the participants in the lab programs are from other districts. And so after all of its budget is addressed, all of its budgetary needs, in terms of teacher salaries, all those kinds of things, there can be a, essentially a rebate back to the five districts that belong, which comes in the form of credits, which we can apply to the following year's tuitions. And this, in FY eighteen, it generated, FY seventeen, it generated about two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars worth of credits that we used in the FY eighteen budget. And, and the FY nineteen budget, actually, right?
No, eighteen.
Eighteen. And there's about two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars in credits that we are planning to use for next year. I do want to say that in, just as of today, I got some feedback from, from the executive directors saying that the Department of Education may be tightening up or changing its rules on that, which would be very unfair at this stage in the game. We don't even know what those credits are until the auditor does the books, which was just at our last meeting for lab in, in December. And so for us not to be able to use these credits for FY twenty would impact our bottom line. Hopefully by next week, when we come back to the budget, I'll have some more information about that.
But thank you for flagging that, because we benefit as a district by being one of the five towns.
Yes, for sure.
And other folks whose students come in, pay at a premium to attend lab, and it is very popular, so.
And who determines the credits that get released?
So each, each special education collaborative has a board of directors, and the board of directors are made up by, of the superintendents from the participating districts. So lab is us, right? These collaboratives are, they're created by and extensions of the districts that are their members. Some special ed. Some special ed collaboratives give an annual assessment just to be a member, and that helps to sustain the budget in addition to tuition. The credits are determined by a vote of the board of directors, so I'm involved in that. And there are portions based on our enrollment, in some cases, in the case collabora, and on the space that we provide, because both case and lab, opposed to some other special ed collaboratives, have a philosophy that kids in collaborative programs should be educated in at least one of the districts. And so, we all provide space. That's a condition of being in lab, is that we do provide space.
And Bedford's space is beautiful compared to the other collab, I mean, it's...
We provide, you know, they benefited from our, you know, our building projects.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure, you said $219,000 would be applied to fiscal 19 or to fiscal 20?
$219,000 we're applying, just to be safe, $195,000 of that to FY20. And that's the one that I'm a little concerned in this recent news, and we'll come back to when we have more information.
That gives us our lab caseload. Again, kids age out for, when they hit 22, so it's not, they don't get to the end of the year, they simply hit the day and they go out. So, the spreadsheet that I build with the special ed director takes into account all of these moving pieces, and we try to nail down what are these absolutes and which kids are graduating, if they've got enough credits that they will be graduating, we...
And some pass MCAS but don't leave. There's so many factors.
Right, so, we try to err on the conservative side, because you never know that a kid may be okay to be leaving, but stays for other reasons. So, not every kid who's a 12th grader on the list is automatically thought to go. Sometimes we get kids that leave the following January. Sometimes you get kids that leave for other various reasons. In many cases, we have kids who are on settlements, where the settlement is ended, and that's, you know, and it's not tied to anything other than the legal document that you sign. So, these are pretty well scrubbed for those changes. Again, circuit breaker is applied here. Again, circuit breaker is derived from the amount that you spend in the year prior, and is always, is always subject to appropriation. Sometimes we get 65, sometimes we get 72, sometimes we get 70% reimbursement. It's been relatively stable, but you never know when things get sour. It's something that gets, you know, it's a $250 million line item, and there are a lot of communities that, you know, that tap into it, because it's a big expense across the board. But we try to use what we can to offset, to maintain these things, but it fluctuates. When our numbers went down over the last couple of years, our circuit breaker reimbursement went down. Now, suddenly, we get these new kids in, and, you know, you, it's based upon the prior year, so you're kind of in a, in limbo. They do have an extraordinary relief fund, but you still pay the first $250,000. So, it's not, it's not like you get away free. And again, we probably get a reimbursement, in reality, of about 30% of the total cost of a tuition, because you pay the first $45,000, then you get relief on the next amount.
Above it.
But you may get 65 or 70%, so you're still paying another 30, 35%. So, it's...
Extraordinary relief in name only.
In name, right, yeah, it's a long name. And then finally, the last one here is all the private and residential placements. Currently, I'm listing 31 students in FY19. That will drop to six students, by six students, to 25.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Includes summer tuitions and home services. We have a lot of, you know, these kids are, again, are probably in the more severe stages, so there's a lot of ancillary services that students are assigned to help them. And audiology, vision, O and M, none of it is inexpensive, but it's necessary. But we will realize those six students will be going out over the course of either the beginning of FY20 or sometime through FY20, again, age outs. So, we'll actually be saving about $350,000 over what we're spending now.
What's O and M?
Mobility.
Okay.
So, you have...
Okay. I was trying to get the numbers to agree with what we've shared about projected add district cumulative for next year. It was off 57?
We have jumped up to 58. 58, and next year, we'll end up with, kind of no additional kids coming in. We should be at 40, 48 or 47.
So, you're down, you were down at the high 40s and up this year, and then back down?
We were at 49 in last year's FY19 budget piece, and we went up to 58.
Yep.
We should be going back down to 48, 47.
Okay.
But it doesn't show as a cost savings, because during this year, our numbers climbed up.
Yep, exactly, yep.
Hopefully, they'll go back down.
Okay.
Where do you want to go from here?
Let's keep going straight through, and then we'll come back to this. So, info tech.
This is all of the, again, these are line items will be found in the...
Thank you, Samantha.
Hi, Samantha.
In the individual school pieces. They represent all of the funding that the information technology, computer education department is in charge of. The first one is steps and lanes to the instructional coach at the high school there, point eight. There was a request to add point two to that function, to make that a 1.0. That was removed in the initial review of the budget. The rest of these items are fairly standard. We have some replacement leases coming in, so you see a jump in that because of the additional cost of some of the one-time purchases. We're still recognizing somewhat stable lease rates, so I didn't change those too much, but with the cost of financing now, we may see a little uptick in that. The second one, again, is the reduction for the one-time costs from the first year. So, the second year is down by $14,000. And then, we will have the standard third-year renewal for an existing lease. Going down to the bottom of the page, we have a similar situation where we have a staff member instructional coach who's a point six and then a point four elsewhere, wanting to make that a 1.0. That was removed from the budget.
And I'm sorry, David, this is a miscue indication again. That is removed from the budget as an expense, but it is a change in her position. And this goes to this chart. So, let me just review this with you briefly. This is, again, something, you know, that we try to do every year, but it also answers a question from finance committee, are there ways of repurposing positions to get some of what we need while saving money? So, essentially, this is, try to follow. Our step program has historically had a 1.0 sped teacher and a 1.0 adjustment counselor in addition to other part-time positions. We are changing the counseling model to a more clinical model, where students will be pulled out for therapy sessions and counseling, rather than having that person be a part of the day-to-day process. In doing that, we can address those counseling needs with an existing counselor at the high school and fill that adjustment counselor position with a second step teacher, who will be able to teach the math and science that are presently being taught by math and science teachers from the math and science departments. So, that will free up point four in math, which will be used to make that instructional coach whole, because she is point four math teacher, point six instructional coach.
And they're similarly situated as math teachers? I mean, they're same skill levels, same...
Oh, yeah, this, yes. So, she, she will now be able to be a 1.0 instructional coach, and the point four that we will derive from the step program by doing this will replace her teaching in the math department, right? Similar thing will happen with science, the point four from science in the step program. That person is also a teacher of robotics and engineering, and she will pick up more sections of engineering and robotics, which, if you remember, was one of the requests as well, at no cost to the school as well. So, we're answering two needs here without increasing costs. And there should not be additional costs in terms of town expenses either, because these are less than 25.
So, I'll just be difficult. Is it safe, I'm assuming, or is it the case that someone can teach math and sci, if the same person is going to teach math and science?
Yes.
And their license and skill and...
We have such people.
Wow.
We'll have to find, we want, we would prefer to find somebody also with some special ed background, but if not, they will, you know...
They'll be support their...
Yes. So, we'll be looking for somebody with those dual credentials. Right now, I mean, you know, the...
The continuity might be nice. I mean, it's a small group, and you're going to have more...
Okay, so just, so that's, so this is accurate in that it's been removed from additional cost, but just so you'll know, we're still answering the need.
I like the flow chart.
Thank you for suggesting. Okay, David.
Okay.
Page two.
Page two. Standard items, changes across, or essentially, changes in the leases. We did reduce, there was a replacement lease that is aging out. We won't be replacing a lease on iPads. We've got year twos and year threes on existing. Again, year two will drop because of the savings in one-time costs. And the rest of the line item is, we do have, the iPads that we are not renewing on a lease or getting, or replacing on a lease, we are going to be purchasing 60 Chromebooks in their place. It's approximately the same amount of money, about $17,000, $18,000 a piece. So, where we're reducing the $16,000 cost for a new lease, it's actually 19. We will be using $17,880 to get 60 Chromebooks in place of 90 iPads.
Great.
Nice. I'm trying to decipher this last one here, the professional salary line. I don't understand the math in that one.
In which line item?
The 2310-11-5?
Yes.
Because the FY19 approved was 93, FY20 request is 49, it's 47, and it says increase is 1%.
Yeah, the, where you see where it says count FY19 actual approved?
Yep.
I inadvertently grabbed the wrong column. This calculation is based upon what's in that count. That should have been dollar values. Last year, we had, we had originally thought to add a full-time FTE, both at Lane and Davis, for, by making the current person whole in one area and then hiring a new one. That was foregone to get a counselor position.
Okay.
So, that's just picking up the wrong column.
Okay.
I'll fix that for you.
Thank you.
So, that's, so that person is a half-time person, they will remain a half-time person.
Okay.
This is the staffing for the computer lab technician. There's an assistant comes in, that's what that salary will be. Again, the dollar value is the incorrect column. And then, as you go down for leases at Lane, you've got replacement lease, you've got, actually, two replacement leases to the tune of $9,500 a piece, a year-two continuing lease, and a year-three continuing lease. Again, I'll have to fix those columns for you, so you get the right numbers. And then, there was a request for additional Chromebooks, which was removed from this proposal. Any questions there? Okay. For, they're in Davis School, again, the, that's still a half-time person. Number 65 is the incorrect amount, former 19. And then, again, you have new leases for new items. So, the acquisition costs are going up because you're getting new product in both those two. That's where one of those is, the old machines, the old devices that we've purchased are now being completely replaced. Then you have a year-two lease, and you have a year-three lease. Again, year-two will drop down, year-three will remain the same. Those should be...
Can you identify where you are? I got lost.
Page four.
Page four.
Right in the middle of it.
Okay, thank you.
And the rest of these are, again, you've got, you've got changes for staff COLA and steps for the technician staff, the system wide staff, and rollups into the other items.
I assume on 2310-11-9, there's some incorrect numbers there, all the zeros?
Yeah, again, that approved budget column was from last year's numbers, the count column, I'll have to update you on that.
Okay, great, thanks.
That's giving us some changing numbers. So, that brings us to the bottom of page four. They are reducing in the printer projector repair line item. They'll be spending approximately $12,000 less for those services, or at least budgeting that less. And then, the other ones are primarily changes to existing leases at the middle school, reduction for year two, and static for year three. Again, these is very similar to Lane and Davis, where we're replacing pieces, we're bringing in new machines with a new lease, sending the old ones back, and then maintaining years two and three on the new leases.
On what page is that, David?
That's on page...
I think you might have gone backwards.
I went, I'd gone backwards, you're right. Okay, so now, we're on page five?
Yeah.
Okay. These are the supply line items for the, for the district, for all the stuff that IT needs to buy to make sure they have cables and cartridges and... needs to buy to make sure they have cables and cartridges and, and other things. So there, there was a request in '19 that was cut, which was for some replacement of those laptop charging carts. So that's no longer in '20 as well.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
On page four at the bottom, the network, the reduction in, in repairs. What is that based upon? I mean, that's almost a 50% decrease.
Well, a lot of the stuff that they're doing now, that they're, they're purchasing from, but the capital plan going in. So they're not, they're just not going through as many repairs.
Okay.
This is the second or third year that they've had that particular line item, and they're just sort of finding the equilibrium.
Okay.
To what they need to, to replace and repair. Hopefully that continues. I, I think there's so much technology, they're always going to need something.
Sure.
It's just them getting what they need.
But, but it's based on their experience, that they're not needing as many repairs?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
May I interject maybe at point of order?
I was, I think I was gonna say...
We're all going to our same place. I guess I wonder, we had scheduled, I'm just trying to think about planning, we had scheduled another...
For next Tuesday.
Another for next Tuesday. So does it make sense for us to finish facilities and then leave Lane, John Glenn, and the Heisman?
Mike, you were reading my mind.
Okay.
So if that's okay with the committee, it's been a long night for caucus members.
Just that I also wanted to get the year report and the year of items. And then since we started late, I just don't want to have us all here at 12. But I'm at the chair.
I will consider that motion and probably agree with you when we finish facilities. So keep that in mind, everyone, this might be our last, we'll approve the minutes anyway, I think.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'm not doing the year, the mid-year report until a subsequent...
Oh, really? I'm so tired.
No, it's helpful. I mean, it's helpful to look through it at all. It's just I want to have your full attention on it, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so facilities. Those are basically fairly static.
Yep.
Again, you have the COLAs and the changes in the current contract. There aren't a tremendous amount of changes in supplies and materials.
Should that, sorry.
Okay.
Should that item, where it says paraprofessional salary, should that read something different?
Let me get, the actual salary, the...
It just shouldn't say paraprofessional.
The amount that you see here is correct because it references the actual dollar value in the column where it says count.
Yep, no, I was actually all the way on the left under master.
Just the title.
Just the title of it, unless we have professionally custodian.
Well, we, we've always, we've always had the list of as paraprofessional.
All right. All right.
We wanted to change it, I think, a number of years ago, but we had this long history of having them classified that way.
All right then.
So they have it. So these are, again, these are the eight custodians currently in existence and working here at the high school.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time letting that one go. Is it, is it a contractual? Is it the way they're classified in the contract or is that just simply our title?
Simply the way that we've done it.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure there wasn't some kind of mix of benefits or like contractual things. That's fine, thank you. Sorry to harp on it.
It's just really nomenclature.
Yeah, and specifically, when we talk about who we normally think of as paraprofessionals, we have specific titles for them, TA and EA.
That's what I was, that's exactly what I was going with.
Doesn't impact that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So again, that's the steps and, and changes. In FY '20, there's also a change of, there are actually two additional paydays for staff who work year-round because of the way the calendar is cut. It's just something that happens every eight and then four and then, it's a crazy timing. But we want to capture all of those. Again, this is all based upon the collective bargaining agreement that we ratified this past summer. Everything else is staying the same. We do have to start taking into consideration the inflationary, potential inflationary factors, but we're not there yet. Page two, staffing here, four and a half FTEs at the middle school, same issue, COLA, STEPS.
Yep.
Everything else is the same. Page three, you've got the custodians over at, at Lane. Again, your, your steps and lanes. We've had a few new people come on board, so we're going to experience the more lane, step changes than, than we have in prior years, but it, it all pans out in the end. Page four, you have Davis. Again, everything is pretty much identical, just the change for the staffing. Page five, you have...
I thought I was on five, go ahead.
Okay, page five, this is the system-wide, this would be our assistant director for the facilities unit and a floating custodian that we have there. Minor change only because of the floating custodian. The calculation for the assistant director comes after the first, the first of July because it's done in conjunction with the town side. So that's one of the salaries and pay rates that you recalculate come the summer. We just don't capture anything specific in here. I'll have to check on what that $4,000 is. We, there is, there was a request to add custodial staffing for, to help cover the expansion both at Lane and Davis with the new building space coming online. That was held off for this proposal.
And the reason being that Tassir is involved in doing a multi-year study of all the custodial needs across the town and feels that it would make more sense at this point, or it makes sense at this point to meet these needs through some overtime and our floating person and then have, have a response to the needs town-wide rather than just piecemealing this out.
And then the rest of it is static to the current expenses. Page six, there are no changes. Again, everything is, is static with the maintenance of effort for the current year. Nothing for, page seven as well.
Tassir's got a nice easy budget to...
Page, page eight, again, no real, no changes based upon his, his current load of, of work. Page nine, we're bumping up a little bit on one of the offsets for, you know, utilizing some of the money from, from those revolving accounts. And then there's the, the Davis modular is there as well as in the Davis School. So it's a repeat item, but you see, it shows up in, in both areas. That's even one other real change there. And then the next page, you have, again, no real changes in any of it other than the bottom-line item for staffing. Again, that's part of the collective bargain agreement, so those are, given our complement of maintenance folks, that's, the 2% is the, is the COLA for FY '20 on that, for that group. There's probably some change in longevity or some of the other items. They, they are paid on salary, so they're not impacted by the additional two-day rule.
I don't say this jokingly at all, that's like a remarkable budget from Tassir. So could you just thank him? I, I want to make sure he's getting everything he needs because that is almost no increase and in some cases straight decreases.
And especially where some, you know, the cost of building supplies is going out.
Yeah. So whatever, I mean, a lot of it, I don't think this is an accident, right? I think Tassir is finding efficiencies.
Yes.
And I think that he's taken a really deep dive on everything. So it might look like it's the same, but in fact, I think it's a reflection of just a ton of work that Tassir is doing behind the scenes. So could you just thank him for us? Because that's...
Sure.
I've never seen a maintenance budget like that.
Just a question on page 10, there's a minus 61,389 hanging out there on the fifth line from the bottom on 4,222-329.
Offset building rental?
No, it's...
It's below that.
Oh, again, that's the, that sum total 61,000, that's, that's an erroneous column.
Okay, that's what I thought.
None of the totals reference, actually reference that column.
Great, thanks. All right, so I think we're gonna go ahead and pick up with Lane, Jersey Mesa, next Tuesday. Wonderful. But before then, I think we're gonna have the approval of minutes. So I'll say those minutes very quickly. In our packet, we have the minutes from November 27, 2018. I will accept the motion to approve those minutes from any member. Miss Guay moves, Michael McAllister is seconded. Any edits, Mr. McAllister?
None.
Miss Guay.
Nope.
No.
I have one annoying edit on page two, line 36, it says the MOE budget has been calculated to the 3.7%. I would just say a 3.5% increase. And that's all that I have. So all those in favor of approving the minutes on November 27, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I will stay.
Ms. McAllister stays, that approves 401. To reach the end of our agenda, I'll accept the motion to adjourn from any member of the committee.
So move.
Ms. McAllister moves, Miss Guay is seconded. Ms. McAllister?
Ah, yes.
Miss Guay?
Yes.
Miss Schofield?
Yes.
Miss Santiago?
Yes.
I'm a yes. We are adjourned at 10:29, not to reopen, and we'll see you next Tuesday at 7:30.
Thank you, David.